Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order. First, let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag. The United States of America, the Republic of which stands one nation under God, in this world with light and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to start with roll call, starting with Chief.
Chief of Police, Brandon Pasquale.
Deputy Chief of Police, Phil Pulaski.
Kelly Goff, Township Engineer.
Jim Sullivan, Director of Engineering Services.
Dave Criss, Director of Finance.
Jeff Winterbottom, Assistant Manager.
Bob Hart, Township Manager.
Alex Baumler, Township Solicitor.
Supervisor Dennis DeSanto.
Supervisor Winder.
Supervisor Kevin McDevitt.
Vice Chairman Joe Givanas.
And Chairwoman Ashley DePiero. I'd like to make the announcement that we all met for executive session to discuss personnel and litigation. I'd like to also make a motion for the approval of meeting minutes for May 25th, 2021. Do I have a second for that motion?
A second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. At this time, I'd like to open a public meeting. Can I have a motion to open the public meeting, or the public hearing, I'm sorry, for wireless communication facilities ordinance?
I'll make that in form of motion.
Okay, thank you. Thank you Supervisor McDevitt.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you Chair, Vice Chair, Givanas. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Thank you Chairwoman DePiero. Couldn't see the verbal cue. Ladies and gentlemen, tonight, we're entertaining a public hearing to consider a ordinance for the wireless communications facility portion of the East Norton Township zoning ordinance. This is Chapter 205, this is Article 29. Specifically, there are going to be several amendments to the sections, and those include Section 205, 188, 205, 189, 205, 190, 205, 191, 205, 192, and 205, 194. These sections of the zoning ordinance govern the sighting, construction, and use of wireless communications facilities located on towers and non-tower-based structures, both within the township right-of-way and outside of the township right-of-way. All of the changes proposed tonight were resulting of the Federal Communications Commission's orders that were issued in 2019 and 2020. These are commonly referred to as the new shot clock regulations. It took a while for these regulations to wind themselves through court challenges, but the end result is that there are several portions of the township's ordinance that are now out of compliance with the federal and state law. And actually, as recently as Friday, the state legislature also has passed a comprehensive overhaul of their state statutes which address the same issues. So, the time now is ripe for the township to amend those facilities and those regulations that we're out of compliance with. As to the substantive changes, these have been discussed at length during a couple of meetings in the year 2020 by this board and during public meetings. So, I will not go over in-depth every single change, but I will provide an overview of the substantive changes to each of the sections. Please bear with me, this probably will still take a while. Okay, so the first section would be Section 188. There are several definitional changes. The first is to the non-tower wireless communication facility definition. This was simply amended to meet the new FCC regulations, which expand the definition of co-location, to mean that a non-tower wireless communication facility is now considered any mounting of equipment on a pre-existing structure, even those that have not been approved for wireless facility use. Next, the FCC definition for small wireless facility has been added to the ordinance. At the time of the ordinance's passage, the township did not have the definition because the concept and the technology did not exist. A small cell equipment installation is now also permitted to be placed on tower and non-tower-based wireless communication facilities. So, something entirely new for the ordinance. The definition of a tower-based wireless communications facility was also amended to meet the FCC definition, which now defines these towers as those initially constructed for the purpose of housing wireless equipment. What this means also is that if that tower is pre-existing and it was not designed for any kind of wired equipment to be installed upon it, it would not be considered a tower. So, the same as before. Lastly, a definition for the word utility pole was also newly added to match the FCC definitions, and this is done to create a distinction between a pole specifically erected for wireless service and an ordinary utility pole which would house electricity, or cable, or other housing light fixtures. So, the next section that was amended was Section 109, and that's tower-based wireless communications facilities in general. This section was amended to add the new shot clock regulations. The shot clock means essentially that the township only has a certain amount of time in which to receive and process and make a final decision on applications. For traditional tower installations, township has 30 days to notify the applicant as to whether their application is complete, and then 150 days thereafter to render a final decision. The newly added section in the regulations would be for a small wireless facility, which now has a turnaround time of 10-day application, review by the township to communicate whether it's administratively complete, and then a 90-day period in which to render a final decision on the small cell. Application fees for these types of communication facilities are now capped at $1,000 per new pole proposed to house the small cells. Section 191 is a tower based outside of the right-of-way. So, a small change, FCC has lowered the proof standard for a wireless communications provider to justify sighting within the township. The applicant now just has to simply demonstrate that there is a gap in their service or capacity in order to meet their burden of need. Tower-based facilities in the right-of-way is the next section that was amended. Traditional towers are still going to be limited in the right-of-way to certain non-residential zoning districts within the township. However, the big change here is that small cell tower-based installations in the right-of-way are now allowed in all residential areas per the FCC's order. But there are, of course, exceptions and strings to this, and that is if and only if utility poles are used and there are already above-ground utility lines in place or in the vicinity of the area of construction. Demonstration of need still meets the new standard of a gap in service or capacity, and there is also a cap on the annual fee that the township can charge for placement of each of the small cell facilities, and that is $207 per facility in the right-of-way, unless the township can produce a cost study which justifies a charge higher than that gap. Lastly, for non-tower-based wireless facilities in the right-of-way, Section 194, it simply distinguishes small cell wireless communication facilities from other wireless communication facilities that are placed on non-tower types. And again, the same rules as above apply. Small cells can be placed in all zoning districts provided that utility poles, well, provided that structures are used and that they're already above-ground utility lines in the place of the vicinity. So, those are all the substantive changes that have come about as per the regulations. And at this time, I'll turn it over to Chairwoman DePiero to open it up to Supervisor and Public Comment.
Okay, thank you so much. Any questions from the public? Any questions from the board?
I just have one. That was eloquent, I just have to say. So, just to be clear, we're not doing anything radical here, we're just bringing the township up to the standard.
Correct, and I mean, the easiest way to think about it is that you have no control. This comes from the federal law, and now, of course, the state law is codified as well.
Yes.
Any other questions from the board? Okay. I'd like to entertain a motion to close the public hearing for the wireless communication facility.
Put that in the form of a motion.
Okay, thank you Supervisor DeSanto. Do I have a second for that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, seconded by Supervisor McDevitt. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next is public hearing for tree protection standards ordinance. I'd like to make a motion to open this public hearing. Anybody wanting to entertain a motion to begin that meeting?
I'll put that in the form of a motion.
Thank you Vice Chair, Givanas. Anybody want a second motion?
I can second it.
Okay, seconded by Supervisor Winder. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all those opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Thank you Chairwoman. This is a more straightforward ordinance. This one is going to add a new Chapter 179 to the Township Code of Ordinances, and its purpose is to establish regulations to preserve, protect, and maintain existing trees and native species, prohibit the clear-cutting of trees, maintain heritage trees, and ensure that all future applications for earth disturbance permits, demolition permits, building permits, subdivision, land development, or zoning change applications respect existing trees as they are currently cited on properties. The reason that this ordinance came about is that the township has no regulations whatsoever protecting heritage and currently existing trees. And there's also, of course, nothing in the regulations that would stop a person or a developer from clear-cutting all the trees on a property without receiving some kind of prior permission from the township, or which would require them to preserve any heritage trees that are on the property. The major regulations that were put in place by the ordinance are fairly simple, and I'll just walk right through them. So, first, there is a prohibition on clear-cutting of trees under any circumstances. Two, each and every application for an earth disturbance permit, demolition permit, building permit, subdivision, land development, or zoning change now has to include a tree survey plan provided to the township experts showing all trees that are to be saved, lost, or destroyed, the location of tree protection fences for each tree to be saved, and a proposed tree replacement schedule. Every tree that is determined to be living and healthy within six inches or greater of a width in which is designed to be removed or destroyed is to be replaced with one or more new shade trees of a type approved by the township. No heritage trees that are currently existing are to be removed for any reason except with the permission of the Board of Supervisors under the new ordinance. Replacement trees are to be planted in addition to those required by the Township's subdivision and land development ordinance. Tree species are to be considered hardy to the area and non-invasive, and 50% of the trees that are going to be implanted must be native. And also, the ordinance does allow a little bit of leeway with respect to using flower and evergreens and shrubs in lieu of replacement of trees. Flower and evergreens, there's a maximum use of 30% instead of trees, and shrub cover for 10% in lieu of those two. And then, of course, there are post-planning replacement guarantees and inspections performed by the township to make sure that everything was properly installed and planted. And with that, I'll turn it back over for Public Comment and Commissioner Comment. I'm sorry, Supervisor Comment.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I could just add a couple sort of real-world examples in this. This is, these types of ordinances are common, but not throughout every municipality. It's really based on, or designed around, if you own a large property, that you can't go in and just take everything down. That is, we have some properties in our township that are really a forest, and if you bought it and just clear-cut everything, that would have effects, first on the environment, also on stormwater, and all different types of issues that you're not thinking of at the time. This requires, if you go and do that, that there's a plan, and then there's a replacement of a variety of different things to help the environment, to help stormwater, to help those types of issues. So, that's really what it comes down to. I've been in other municipalities where their tree replacement ordinance went too far because you couldn't build. We, our planning commission, with Chair McColl, and our engineers have worked to make this reasonable but effective at the same time, so that's what's going to be.
Thank you. Any questions from the public? Any questions from the board?
I got one. Sorry, I'm hot tonight. So, let's say hypothetically, I buy a property and I have a tree that's too close to my house, and I want to go on. What do I, what are my steps? What steps do I have to take?
Do you know, Jim?
One tree next to your house, you can take that down anytime you like.
Two trees.
The earth disturbance kicks in at 5,000 square feet. So, in a half-acre lot, you have to have a half-acre lot minimum, 5,000 square feet disturbance before you have to worry about...
So, this doesn't affect anyone who owns less than a half acre?
That's correct.
Yeah, that's why I said it's for bigger properties, it's not meant for homeowners who have some...
No, 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 you know, in some places, if you buy a property, it's your property, and what you do with it is your business. So, let's say I own an acre of land, and I want to clear-cut the trees. I don't want trees because they clog the gutters, and I just want a lawn, and what steps do I need to take to say, "I want these trees out of here, I bought this property"? What are the steps that a property owner would need to take?
You would have to prepare a tree survey plan to show all the existing trees on the property, and then give us a plan of what you want to cut down, and then how many you have to replace. Basically, 35% inch, caliber inch is what you would have to replace. Not 100%, but 35% of what you cut down.
And is that something that's a normal, in surrounding townships and counties? This is less than the norm? Okay.
For a lot of these ordinance, that's what I said. I dealt with it in a minority, it was too unbearable. Exactly how you say, you own the property, you should be able to do what you want with it, to the extent you're not affecting...
Right, if you're not affecting stormwater and all that, I get that.
This is basically 35% of what you take out in a variety of different ways to replace is kind of the goal behind it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions from the board? Question?
You need me over there?
Sure.
Hi, my name is Ken Kristovich. I reside at 2937 Tankwood Lane in East Norton Township. And Supervisor Ray, you have a very good point. I own 6/10 of an acre. And since I settled that property in January of 1986, I've lost over 40 trees. Some of them as tall as 185 feet. A lot of them have been lost to disease, they're ash trees. Some have been wiped out by the windshear that comes across that part of the township that sweeps through the park. Sandy, I think we had eight on the ground and five more that were topped. So, how does this affect my ability to clean up storm damage or remove dead trees?
It doesn't.
It doesn't?
It doesn't.
So, if the tree's dead, I can cut it down, and I don't even have to tell the township?
Well, I would talk to the township, that's what I would do. Jim, if you want to...
Well, I mean, in theory, that's correct, but you know, you should talk to the township so that they can verify that the tree is dead.
That's the way it's done in other...
So, if it's laying on the ground through my neighbor's fence and there's...
It's probably dead.
Well, no, actually, that was an old live tree. And unfortunately, I think it was, I think it was 38 inches in diameter. That was a huge loss, but thank God it fell through his fence and not through my roof. That was a blessing. Okay, so will this ordinance clarify all that so that as a homeowner, we understand when we need to report, when we don't have to report? And the other last question that I'll ask, I've been fortunate in that I've had natural propagation of native trees back onto my property, and it's because of bird droppings or whatever, pollination or whatever. And we're trying to help those trees as much as possible. Some are growing, you know, they're not this big, and they're growing with great distortion that would probably be dangerous at a later time. Can we remove those without making a big deal out of it?
The ordinance is for six inches in diameter or larger. So, if you have a bunch of saplings you want to cut down, you're free to do so.
Free to do that, okay. And similar, I had to remove a couple because while they just came up near the house, within 10 years, they became too large and unmanageable and started interfering with siding and brickwork and so forth. So, we just cut those down. So, I guess once again, if something shows up and it's in the wrong place, then just cut it down before it exceeds.
And once again, 5,000 square foot is the threshold. So, if you want to cut down a tree that's threatening your house, or you're certainly able to do that.
And we will be doing some educational pieces in our newsletter about this, which would help.
That'd be great, okay. So, I think what you just said is that the footprint of my house is less than 5,000 square feet, and there's a tree within five feet, and I can just cut that down.
No, it's, earth disturbance means you're tilling the ground or disturbing the ground. So, if you have a 5,000 square foot area you want to disturb, and there's a bunch of trees in there, then you will have to meet the requirements.
Oh, I see, you're talking in the Lord's English.
Correct.
Okay. Well, thanks very much, and more information, Mr. Hart would be greatly appreciated of this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I'd like to make a motion to close a public hearing for the tree protection standards ordinance. Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, seconded by Supervisor DeSanto. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Citizens to be heard. Comments by the Board of Supervisors?
The only thing I have is, Sunday is 4th of July, and we all hear fireworks every night. I know I do. If you're watching this, if you're one of the many thousands that are watching this on YouTube, please, with caution, don't be the one celebrating and shooting off fireworks. Please don't do that inebriated, and please be mindful that, we all know that it's a holiday, but at a certain hour, people go to bed, and there are some people who just, it bothers them, and not only annoys them, but it bothers them psychologically. So, please be mindful of your neighbors, but have a safe and happy 4th of July.
Pass.
I'm sorry?
Pass.
Pass, too. Yep.
I will add that there'll be some information on social media in the next day or so that show what you should and what you shouldn't do with any...
If you have a beer in one hand and a lighter in the other...
It's a bad idea.
You're in the wrong town.
Any other comments by the board?
If I could just acknowledge, just Pride Month, we're still in June, so just want to acknowledge that publicly, and really appreciated the team that put together the flag raising ceremony. So, thank you Chairwoman DePiero for leading that effort. And then, just celebrating Juneteenth, the fact that that's now a federal holiday, and to see companies across our country take a moment to honor what Juneteenth means is important for us to acknowledge as well. So, thank you.
Onto old business, Ordinance 589, Wireless Communication Facilities. Subject was just talked about, but I'd like to call on the Township Solicitor, Alex, again to review the ordinance.
Well, this is, yeah, this is an action item, so please don't review the ordinance again. Did I say that out loud? No, but this is, Madam Chair, this is what...
We just simply need a motion to pass this.
What we just discussed this evening, right now is just an action item to act on that.
Correct.
Sorry, I was nudging them and everything. I'm like, your turn. Look alive, pal.
All right, so I'll put that in the form of a motion. Does anybody want to second that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Seconded by Supervisor McDevitt. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, Ordinance 590, the Tree Protection Standards, and again, we just had a public hearing about that item, and it was described in detail. So, we only need to pass this by motion. So, Madam Chair, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll put that in the form of a motion. Anybody want to second that motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Supervisor DeSanto.
DeSanto, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, all those opposed? Motion carries. Onto new business, Authorization to Advertise Pot Shop Road Calvert Streambank's Stabilization. Likes to call on Township Engineer, Ms. Kelly Goff, to review this item, please.
Thank you Chairwoman DePiero. At this meeting, we'd like to recommend the authorization of bidding of the Pot Shop Road Calvert Streambank Stabilization. This project will include the remediation of the eroded area near the downstream end wall near the intersection of Pot Shop and Truman. The projected estimated cost is around $45,000.
Any questions from the board? I'd like to present a motion to authorize to advertise Pot Shop Road Calvert Streambank Stabilization. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, seconded by Vice Chair, Givanas. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Item B, Authorization to Advertise 2021 Road Program. I'd like to call on Township Engineer, Kelly Goff, again, to review this item.
Thank you Supervisor, Givanas. At this time, we recommend the authorization of advertisement of the 2021 Road Program. Under this project, the remediation of Sawmill Court and Greenridge Drive will be included. Remediation will include full-depth reclamation as well as milling and overlay and improvements to stormwater infrastructure. This project will be funded by the municipal liquid fuels funds.
If I can add, Madam Chair, if you recall a few years ago, we changed the process of what we did in the past for many years here, they sent somebody out with a paintbrush and painted the streets black. I'm half kidding, but they did a microchip and really a coating, they didn't do an actual road program. And needless to say, if anyone lives in East Norton, your thing would be, your street would be done in July, and the following April, there's white lines going all directions. We've changed that process, and now we do an aggressive road program. Not only do we repay the roads, but there's certain areas that need full reconstruction. There's some areas that need absolute curves and inlets. So, we are much more aggressive in our road program and really investing in our infrastructure that will last for many years to come, and we threw out the paintbrushes, so that's good.
All right, thank you for the explanation, I appreciate that. Any questions from the board?
I have one question. Mr. Hart, how are we determining which roads get done? Is it from west to east? Is it a need?
No, there is, it's a need. We tour the township. Unfortunately, it's a more difficult job when deciding what's in the most critical of the need when you've been microchipping for years. So, normally, you have them three stages, well, we have a whole lot in the first get-it-done stage. So, we'll be talking to, this is a substantial, this is double what we did in many years, and we're going to continue to be aggressive in that so we can whittle down, especially the first stage, whittle it down fast, and then continue.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? I'd like to make a motion to authorize to advertise the 2021 Road Program. Do I have a second for that motion?
I can second it.
Seconded by Supervisor Winder. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution number 2837, Preliminary Land Development Approval of $25,000 to Cal Pike. I'd like to call on Director of Engineering Services, the Dapper, James Sullivan.
I got the wardrobe information late this evening, so I'm as dressed up as I can get. And thank you Supervisor DeSanto. This project involves the redevelopment of a 6.5-acre property located 2500 to Cal Pike, from an office use to a five-story, 179-unit apartment complex in the HR1, High-Rise 1 Residential Zoning District. A preliminary land development plan approval resolution has been prepared for consideration this evening, and since the applicant is requesting preliminary approval only, it will have to appear before the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors again for a final approval. Representing the applicant this evening is John Rathman of Metropolitan Companies. Thank you. Mr. Rathman?
Good evening. Thank you for your time today. As Mr. Sullivan described, we are taking 2500 to Cal, which is a current four-story brick office building, has a water feature out front, and looking to redevelop it into a multifamily apartment complex. Here tonight, I do have Eric Gardner from Gilmore Associates, who is the civil for the project, and Greg Friar from Meister Cox, who's the architect for the project. We prepared a bunch of exhibits and some renderings and some things of that nature. We have been through the Planning Commission, went through their comments, reviews, we've received one round of review letters from all the, two rounds of review letters, I'm sorry, from all the township professionals. We've met individually with them and are prepared to address all their comments. Just a quick background, and before I let our professionals introduce, you know, explain the project in more detail, Metropolitan Companies, fully-integrated development company. What that means is we, from land acquisition all the way through property management, it will be strictly handled by our company. I work on the land development side and approval side. I look from acquiring the ground... I look from acquiring the ground, um, through the engineering approval process. Um, we work closely with our vertical construction team, which is D and B Construction, who will oversee the site improvement installation as well as the vertical construction, which then it will go over to our management company, who will manage, lease it up, manage it for the long run. Um, we are privately owned company, um, single owner. Um, we don't have outside partners. And the reason I explain a lot of that to you is we're here for the long haul with the community. We have, uh, we're prepping the next generation of, of my owners', uh, children to take over the company. We own and operate about thirty-five hundred apartments right now. We build in-house about three to five hundred per year, about two thousand, uh, units in the pipeline to be constructed over the next four years. Um, we're all throughout Pennsylvania, um, Delaware, and, uh, a little bit in New Jersey as well. The bulk of our portfolio, um, starts, we're based out of Berks County, um, Wyon Missing. That's where we were founded, so our geographical footprint keeps coming out and expanding, expanding, expanding. Uh, we do have an office in Warrington, which is where I sit. So, like I said, we're here. We're not a company that comes in, gets a project approved, flips it to somebody, or even builds it, stabilizes it, and flips it. Um, so we take a lot of pride in the design, making sure, from a long-term management standpoint, everything works, making sure we're offering the, the best amenities that we can to our clientele, you know, from down to the reserving, you know, when the moving truck's coming and how we control that to how we control trash, um, how we control, you know, the amenities within, within the complex. Um, we would take, make sure we think through every piece of that. So, um, I'm here, obviously, as the owner's rep to make sure, if you have any questions, I can answer for you. Um, Mr. Garten is going to run through the civil design, give you a little background, some aerial property. Um, and then we have the architect as well, who can run through some of the renderings if you'd like to see them of the proposed product. At this point, um, we're just looking for preliminary, uh, plan approval. We'll be back for final if we should gain preliminary. Um, the, there's also, obviously, um, it's on to Cal Pike, the future to Cal, uh, 202 road widening through Pendot. We're working closely with that to get the HOP permit and tie into that future design. Um, and then we're obviously received comments from Montgomery County Planning Commission as well.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, as John said, I'm Eric Garten from Gilmore and Associates, the site civil engineer on the project. If whoever's controlling the computer could pull up the aerial plan exhibit. It's funny, we all got used to doing this on Zoom ourselves, and now back in person. It's, uh, it's a little bit of a learning experience again here. So this is obviously a very big, uh, aerial plan, and it's not crazy zoomed in on the property, but, um, so as John had mentioned, uh, the property's on 202, and on this aerial, the property we have outlined.
Well, yeah, you can show it so like everybody can see it. Because they can see it up there, okay, yeah.
Thank you.
Now I can't see. So the, the property is outlined in yellow. Uh, as, as John said, it's on 202, uh, to the west. To the north, keep moving it on me here, uh, to the north is a wooded area. That's an unnamed tributary of the Stony Creek. Just on the other side of the woods, this is actually an existing six-story apartment building, so we're, we're right near that. To our south is, uh, the St. Patrick Cemetery, uh, and then to the east is Carol Lane, uh, single-family residential development. Um, I just pulled this up so you guys have an understanding of where we are in the township. Um, you know, the big shopping center here at the intersection of Germantown Pike and 202. If you could pull up then the record plan? Um, and so this is the record plan for the project. Um, as John said, uh, we have been in front of the Planning Commission twice. Uh, we were in front of them in January just to give them kind of a high-level overview of what we were proposing to do, uh, receive some of their feedback, uh, some of the important concepts to them, which was getting sidewalk along 202 to try to get connection of our site and our residents up to that shopping center, as well as whatever else is on 202, as well as providing an access for the, the existing residential to get out to 202. That was the, the biggest, I guess, change from the Planning Commission. Uh, even before that, pre-pandemic, we met with, you know, Township Manager, Solicitor, and Engineer, Fire Marshal, uh, geez, this was like late 2019 to try to, uh, you know, just get their initial feedback on this. Since that time, we have gotten two review letters, um, two rounds of reviews from all of your consultants. Generally speaking, everything is a will comply, uh, in terms of their comments, with the exception of waivers. But, um, just to continue to walk you around the site here quickly, um, this is, this black and white 2D, uh, plan certainly does not look as good as what the architect's going to show you, so I'm going to go quickly here. Uh, this is the building. Here, located, pushed up close to the front of the site, there is an existing pond right along 202 there. Um, internal to the building is a nice courtyard, and we'll show you a lot of pictures of what those amenities will look like. Under the building's a parking garage, uh, that has, I think, a hundred and seventy-eight parking spaces in it. Um, in the back is parking, uh, as well as there's a fire lane and access around the building, which was one of the comments when the Fire Marshal wanting to have access around the entire site. Again, cemetery's down here, the creek's up there, 202 and Carol Lane. With that, I'm going to show over to the architect, because pavement and concrete curving and everything is nowhere near as sexy as what Rick's going to go through here. So, Rick.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. My name's Rick Friar, uh, with Meister Cox Architects, and I'm going to walk you through some of the 3D views, um, and some to show you kind of what this project can look like. Um, if you can go to the, uh, first folder of the render exterior, please, and then you can just, we can scroll through those. So this is kind of the front corner as you turn in off of the Cal Pike. This is kind of what you'll see. Um, as Eric kind of hinted at, the circulation's kind of one-way around in the building, so you'll go in, uh, you'll turn in off of, off of 202, and you'll go along the, the right side of the building, um, around to the parking lot in the back, and then everyone will exit around the other side, um, and kind of meet back at this point before going back at the 202. So we really wanted this front corner to be a, a statement feature, um, at the corner. Um, so this is kind of the entrance feature that you see. Uh, you can, keeps going through. Um, a lot of these are the same area. There is a full parking garage on the first floor. Um, it's podium-style construction, so the first floor is non-combustible, um, concrete and steel construction. Um, the apartments themselves on top of that, four stories are wood construction on top of that. Keeps going. So this is kind of the entrance off of 202, um, so, turning off of 202. And then the drive aisle does, does go along the right side of the building. Um, there are some, some unit balconies kind of around the perimeter of the building. So that's driving towards the back parking lot. Uh, this is kind of looking from 202. I'm not sure if there'll be someone fishing there or not, but, but that, but that, that shows the existing pond, uh, that is, that is there and, and will remain, um, on the site. Keeps going through. We should be coming around to some, towards the back of the building. And this is, this is the backside of, of a little more, uh, service-oriented, um, trash collection. Um, there are two dumpster locations, uh, we've coordinated, you know, make sure trash can get in and, you know, can get, get down there and, and be collected, um, with ease from, from trash trucks, um, so.
This is the side that faces the existing.
Yes. Yes.
It's not Carol Lane. It's not looking at the back of this.
Correct. Um, this is kind of the back facing the parking lot, so this is actually, on the left-hand side, you're looking down the entrance road towards 202. Um, this is the backside of the building. Um, again, it, it has a, you know, there will be surface parking there, so, you know, it does have a little bit of a, of a face for the residents. Um, so that's, that's the backside of the building.
This is what Carol Lane looks like.
Yes. Just some more, some more shots of that front entrance. Again, that front entrance is kind of our statement element that we really want to, to wow people, um, and, you know, as, as they, as they come into the site.
What about the other apartment? What will they see? What angle will they see?
I don't know that they'll see, yeah, I don't believe they'll, they'll see much.
Okay.
Apparently, definitely wooded between the two apartments.
Okay.
And if you kind of go, I mean, maybe go back a few to that one that kind of showed that backside. I mean, over here is actually more residential units, um, so I mean, this kind of third on the backside is where a lot of the service, you know, service entrances are, but then this side, which is probably more so that side of the building, is residential units with, with their, um, with balconies and things like that, so. Uh, yeah, it's a separate folder, yeah. You, I think we've gone through all these. If you, if you want to go through to the, there's a separate folder, I believe, on the, if you go back, back one. Uh, we can, uh, let's do the courtyard first, actually. So, again, the building is a podium-style construction, so the first floor, um, will be, um, steel and concrete construction. The inside, the interior has a courtyard, um, a pretty sizable-sized courtyard in the middle, um, so it's, it's often referred to as doughnut-style construction. Um, basically, there's a big hole, um, in the middle of the building, um, and the, the courtyard for, um, resident use is on that, on that concrete deck on the, above the parking garage. Um, so there'll be, um, a lawn area, um, a turf lawn area, seating areas, fire pits. Um, there will be a pool on, on that level as well, um, and so, you know, really just nice amenities for, for the residents to, to use, um, and enjoy. And that's, that's the pool area. Um, pool area actually is recessed into the, I mean, there's a boxed-out area in the garage. Um, the pool's actually recessed down into the garage space, but, just some aerial shots of what it could look like from a potential residence balcony.
What's size your standard, uh, interior unit sizes?
I believe it's about a fifty-fifty split, one and two bedrooms. Um, some, some units have dens as well. I believe about eight-fifty is the one-bedroom, um, eight, around eight-fifty, and I believe we go up to eleven to twelve-hundred is the two-bedrooms, in, in that range. Um, and then we, we can look at some of the, some of the interior amenities spaces. I mean, there'll be full, um, full fitness center, common space, a, a community kitchen-type place where people can have like bridal showers and, you know, larger, larger gatherings and things like that. Um, you know, there'll be a, um, media lounge, um, if you want to go to the interior renderings, yeah. These are a little bit sketchy because they haven't been fully developed yet, um, but this is kind of the, the idea of, of where we're going. I mean, the interior's going to have a little bit of, of a modern look to it, um, is, is where we've been trending, um, lately. Again, this is, not, not, not all this is completely set in stone, but, um, this is kind of the public space. So, you know, we, we want to introduce, you know, green, greenery and live walls and things like that, um, and to really make it, make it a nice space where people want to hang out outside their, outside their apartments. And then that's direct access onto that courtyard area from that, from that location. And then we can look at some, I mean, if you want to look at some floor plans, we can. I mean, I don't know that, it screams real small, I don't need to, but.
Awesome, thank you. Um, and John, I don't want to put words in your mouth because the engineers shouldn't be talking about target markets, but, uh, you, you're talking about young professionals, empty nesters, who's generally who are living in these types of buildings?
Yeah, honestly, you can utilize all of that on our, on our own complex, our own complexes. Of the, of the thirty-five hundred units that we have right now, we're, we're really, uh, are seeing, and this isn't just by target marketing or anything, it's really what we're seeing is two different age classes. We're seeing twenty-five to thirty-five, um, is the first target, and, I mean, the first market, and then the other one would be the, uh, over fifty-five move-down buyer as well. Um, that makes up honestly about eighty percent of our market in our current portfolio. Um, there's, there's two reasons, obviously. Um, as, as people are, you know, kids are leaving the, the home and, and people are, you know, getting a little bit older, they want to have less maintenance. Um, they also might want to have a second house, um, so we're finding that a lot of, you know, fifty-five and older, or, or even sixty-five and older, um, folks are moving into our communities. The other is honestly the, the younger, young professionals. It's before, you know, people are starting families later, people are buying houses later in life. Especially right now, it's almost impossible to buy a house, so, um, it's, uh, we're really seeing a lot of young professionals. You know, people might have their first child and then, you know, shortly thereafter move out, um, from it. In terms of, uh, children, public school-aged children, we have our own, uh, data. Then we also, you know, we have done a full fiscal study, which we'll provide as well. But we average point zero eight children per apartment. So it's, uh, our standard, you know, two-hundred-unit complex is about sixteen school-aged children, which is just, it's just about in line with the, you know, the national studies and the studies performed by Rutgers. They, they would put us at probably about eighteen, but historically, we're about sixteen, and, and actually, one of our complexes really drives that number up because it's in a very good school district, um, out in Dolphin County, and it's right next to a very good elementary school. Um, so we have a ton of kids in that. We, we didn't exclude that from our averages, but that's where we're at for, uh, school-aged children.
Alright. Thank you.
Before I get into like the housekeeping stuff, I guess I'll open it up to the, to you guys and the, the public if there's any questions about the architecture, uh, the operations or, or the, the site design before.
Is there any questions by the Board?
I have a question. Uh, right now, there's a access to Carol Lane?
Yes, correct. There's a word, the access there.
Right, is that going to stay gated, or is that?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
We did, as Eric mentioned, um, so the, uh, the, one of the main comments was having pedestrian access from Carol Lane out to, uh, to Cal Pike, um, so we did add some sidewalks and, and line striping and the nature of that, but that's the real only, um, full-time access will just be pedestrian access.
Thank you.
How much is it to rent, uh, a unit? I mean, I know you're.
Yeah, you refine our market studies as you go through the process. Right now, we're probably, uh, we sort of base it off square footage.
Okay.
Probably about a dollar twenty to a dollar thirty-five. So, you know, for the one-bedroom, you're probably twelve-fifty to fourteen-hundred-ish, and, you know, probably sixteen, seventeen hundred for the two-bedroom. Um, we, it's a moving target right now.
Sure.
We update it as we go, uh, we, we base on all the comps around us, so, but that's what we're targeting in our reform at this point.
And just to be clear, there's no dog park there, is there?
There's not a dog park. We love to have dog parks. Um, we're trying to incorporate some sort of, uh, dog run at the back of the property or something of that nature. We're,
Unless you really hate dogs.
Rick had mentioned some of them. You know, the, the pool area will have, uh, fire pits, probably a bocce ball, the pool with the sun deck in it. Um, we will have a full fitness center. It actually looks out over onto the courtyard. Um, we will have, uh, meeting rooms that you can rent, um, individual offices that you can rent and plug in, um, or reserve, not rent, I'm sorry. And then the, the community kitchen will be available as well, a reserve, uh, a lot of package center, full indoor mail, concierge service. Um, and then we will have a full-time leasing, um, agent on, on the property, uh, Monday through Friday, and full-time maintenance, uh, on, on property, on the property as well.
Okay.
Uh, this.
Any other questions?
Yes, okay. Uh, if, I don't know if this was answered, um, or asked. How many units?
A hundred and seventy-nine.
And the, the building itself, um, you mentioned the, I forget the name of the apartment building that's like right next door, the six stories. Um, will this be around the same height because of the, the four stories and the, and the garage underneath? Do we know how tall this building's going to be?
I don't, we don't know how tall that six-story building is, but it's going to be in the same general.
Do we know how tall your building's going to be?
Do you know what the average height is?
Okay.
Yeah, it's under the zoning requirement.
Alright, and my last question. Um, Vice Chair Givanas has been trying to resurrect the, um, fishing derby from years ago. We wanted to know if we can use the pond for that? I'm kidding, I'm kidding, so.
We're trying to incorporate, uh, we're, we're trying to incorporate like a little, you know, some banjo in there. It's a great feature of the property, so we are trying to utilize that, um, maintain that aspect.
I think the owner has thought about maybe putting a sprayer fountain or something in there too, just to give it some visual, visual area.
Thank you.
That's great. He is kidding about the, uh, the fishing derby. But we did have another pond in another area of the township where we did hold fishing derbies back in the day, and that pond is no longer there, and I'm glad to see you retaining the pond that's along the Cal. I, I have a question about, um, the Carol Lane side. Any of the residents comment? I mean, I, you saw the, the view, and they're used to having a, a, basically a commercial building there. Now they're going to have people four or five stories up looking over their backyards. Is that, has that been addressed?
If you could pull up the landscaping plan, um, because the renderings are great for the, for the building, but there's significant existing vegetation here. for the building, but there's significant existing vegetation here.
Mm-hmm.
We are putting some vegetation here also, and there's some parking lot trees.
I know, it's not gonna, it's not gonna cover the, the height of the building, that's for sure.
Additionally, upfront, we, when we get the final approval, your ordinance requires this amount of parking. We don't believe we'll need this amount of parking, so at some point, we would be talking about doing a reserved parking agreement that your solicitor would prepare, that we wouldn't build this parking in the back, put more landscaping in there to help buffer it, and then if the need arose, the township felt we needed more parking, if they thought we needed more parking, we could build it then.
Okay.
So, but to, the other question, we have not heard from anyone on Carol Lane. They have, we had two planning commission meetings, no one attended. I don't know if anyone from Carol Lane's here tonight.
The clean up that's happening on, is that on your, on the property that's happening now?
What's that?
On the edge of that, on, on the edge of that Oliver and Kyola property right now, there's, there's parts of the, the pond that are exposed that I never knew existed. Is that your property, or is that?
I'm not aware.
There's a bunch of trees, there's a bunch of trees clean, clean cut. It's funny that that came up today, because, do you know about it?
I don't. I can definitely ask the.
Oh, well, if it wasn't you guys, you would know, so.
I'd be hard pressed to think it's the, we're the equitable owner at this, at this point. We have it under agreement with the underlying owner. I'd be surprised if it was him, but it's, I don't know that it's on our property.
Okay.
Regarding Carol Lane, we, we have not had any, have anybody come out. We have the property listed on our website with some photographs and things of that. My contact information's all on there. Before we are ever, our, our typical practice is before we ever break ground on any project, we send mailers out to all of the surrounding residents that has my business card with my cellphone on it, and we try to get ahead of it. We find it's easier to get ahead of, of the complaints and, and, you know, the change, and people don't always like change. And we try to head off the, the comments to, you know, township staff and things of that. So we, we do try to decrease that impact. If, you know, we've held neighbor meetings before, if we have people come out, and, you know, when we're going through the approval process, but it has been relatively quiet on this, on this project.
Okay. Well, thanks for explaining that. I'm sure that is, you know, that will head off and, and it'll take, alleviate some of the anticipated problems if we have any.
It comes back to us regardless.
Yeah. Okay, thanks.
If I can add, Supervisor Givanas, from a staff level, that's one of, that was one of our big concerns, making sure there's the proper bufferage of, of a variety of measures to make it as comfortable as possible for the neighborhood behind. As far as this project, the developer did not need relief.
Right.
So I, I appreciate what, and I know we as a staff appreciate the, the way that the, the developer has offered to address these issues. Because quite frankly, there's some things the developer doesn't have to do. But as a good neighbor and, and being, being a, an owner, you know, like they said initially, some companies come in, get the approvals and sell, sell, right? They're not concerned. This company, from the very beginning, we knew, they keep it, they run it, they manage it. There is a real investment in the community. So we have worked with the developer and, and all the professionals to make sure those things are, they don't want to say to us, go pound sand, we're going to do what we want. And on this, on the, on the flip side, we want to get the best plan that works for everybody. And that's, we've had a great relationship so far. As we get to the finish line on this, we expect that to continue. And I think it will be a, a successful solution to, to the entire project, so.
Thanks for explaining that. And I'm sure our great planning commission has probably addressed some of these issues already. And, you know, if I'm being redundant, I apologize for that, but just want to make sure they're covered.
Yeah, I don't want to put words in John's mouth, but they did vote unanimously to approve our, our preliminary application. And he's shaking his head yes, so.
They actually came before us twice. We asked them to come voluntarily the first time.
Okay.
And it came the second time.
It's good to hear.
Any other questions?
So if there's no other questions, as, as we've mentioned earlier, we're here for a preliminary plan approval. Your solicitor and staff put together a resolution. I don't know if there's actually a number to it, but they've sent it to us beforehand. It outlines the conditions, which is your petition review letters and some waivers. We are 100% fine with the resolution as written. You could have your solicitor go through it like he did the telecommunications ordinance. If you want, but otherwise, you know, that's what we're here tonight to seek approval based on the wording and the resolution.
This is resolution number 2837. Would anybody like to make a motion to approve resolution number 2837 for the preliminary land development approval? Form a motion by Supervisor De Santo. Anyone else second that motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Vice Chair De Santo. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks for coming out.
Item number D, resolution number 2838, amendment, final land development approval, 317 Germantown Pike. I'd like to call on Director of Engineering Services, Jim Sullivan.
Thank you Supervisor Winder. This is an amended final land development plan for 317 Germantown Pike. This project involves the construction of a one-story, 17,200 square foot medical office building in the BP profession, business and professional zoning district. This, this project was approved in 2006 for two buildings, one of which exists today and the other one which was never constructed. And it was approved for a three-story, 36,000 square foot building. The applicant is coming to you tonight for a smaller one-story structure, as I indicated. An amended final land development plan approval resolution has been prepared for consideration, and representing the applicant for a short presentation is Ms., Ms. Kimberly Fryman, Ms. Fryman.
Thank you. Good evening. Kim Trunus from Fox Rockchild here, representing the applicant, which is Metaphlex East Martin LLC. They are the equitable owner of the front head. So actually, if you go to the next plan, you'll see an aerial plan of the property, which is, I believe, outlined in yellow. So as you'll see, this property did receive approval back in 2006, as Jim indicated. The building to the rear, which is building number two, is a three-story building consisting of 33,750 square feet. That building was constructed. All of the parking and site improvement has been constructed for both buildings. But we are proposing to amend the footprint of the building to the front of the property closer to Germantown Pike to again, reduce it from a three-story, 36,000 square foot building down to one story and 17,200 square feet. And I'm going to just have Alfrica Lee come up here, Alfrica, who's our engineer, and just show you the changes to the footprint, just a few modifications needs made to the parking areas in connection with this change. But we did have one set of reviews from your township consultants, and actually a second reviewed by the township engineer. And all of those items are, will comply, but I'll just, I'll show you on the next, actually the next plan sheet. Oh, the next one, a lot of aerials. Some of these changes. And also with us tonight is Jeff Goldstein, who's here on behalf of the applicant. So if you have any questions for him about the medical office, he can answer those. And Landon and Bo Nelson from our Lit Architects are also here, and we'll show you the rendering. Go ahead, Al.
As Kimberly stated, my name is Alfrica Lee, I'm an engineering, and this project here, I'll orient you quickly on the plan. The area was before, Germantown Pike is actually off to the left of the plan. The neighbors of Scenic Road are above us on the top part of the plan, and the railroad is actually in the lower part. And as was stated, we're taking a three-story, 36,000 square foot building, reducing it down to a one-story, 17,200 square foot building. The original footprint is located here, it's in a dashed gray area. Anything you see on the plan that's in gray or black is what was originally approved back in '06. Anything you see on the plan here in red is what we're actually modifying. So the new outline of the building, one story, is somewhat irregular shaped and projects into what is currently the existing parking lots. Everything is kind of shifting to the north. We're making some modifications of the parking lot to incorporate the actual building width, being a little wider. We are, however, complying zoning. We still meet all the parking requirements. I think 196 spaces are required, we're providing 198. And we meet all the zoning requirements, the setbacks to the neighbors on Scenic. We're still maintaining that 25-foot setback. We're maintaining the 50-foot setback on Germantown as well as beyond 50 feet to the railroad to the south. There are a couple other minor changes. We're adding a generator pad just off of the building as far as we can away from the residences, mainly because this is a medical office building, there are surgeries. So if power were ever to go out, the idea is a generator would basically back up power to the facility. Incorporation with that, there's a trash area. The whole area is meant to be enclosed in a block wall with gates to the west, which open up towards the parking lot for easy access. And if you go to the front of the, the sheet, we are actually proposing what would now be called, I guess, two heritage trees by your new ordinance. The idea here is we're putting two retaining walls here because these are two old beautiful sycamore trees, so the idea here is we're not trying to impact the root zones, therefore preserving those two trees. And we are doing it voluntarily, not to actually be penalized for it. So that really is the extent of the application. There's not much else here. If you want, we can go through a couple of the photographs, the next slides. I can show you at least some of the four photographs. That's the actual zoning application. If you want to go through, we can, but we comply with everything, and we will comply with all of the requirements, except for with the engineering review letters that we received. These are some photographs of the existing sites. This looks towards the neighbors on Scenic Road. This is the buffer planting, as was planted back in '06. So as you can see, these trees are now probably 20 feet tall. So a one-story building will be completely invisible to the neighbors to the west. The next view shows, I guess, the, the view along the railroad. We'll retain the fence, we're only making some minor modifications to the entry drive, as well as the parking modifications as we show on the plans. And this is the existing parking lot as you see it today. These parking spaces are basically shifting to the north, so we're narrowing up the actual parking lots. And this is the entry drive to the facility. Nothing is really changing here. We're not doing any improvements. There are some county recommendations for changing the, the way the crosswalks are aligned, and we'll agree to do that at a later date as a part of this application. Then we have a few renderings that Bob Lynn had prepared and his team. This is a rendering looking out towards Germantown Pike. Again, the buffer planting is, I guess, on the other side of the building. And then the other rendering is looking from Germantown Pike into the site. This is what you'll see as you're driving along Germantown Pike. And that's what we have to present tonight. That's a nice shirt, Jim.
Any questions from the board?
What kind of surgeries?
Good evening. I'm Chad Goldstein with Metaphlex Property Group. I'm a senior ordinance on our projects. It's an outpatient surgery center. It's a pain management group of procedures. So we are not a speculative developer. We don't put up buildings and hope to draw tenants in. We are assignment driven. So there's a group that's been in practice for, I think, 20 years, that we do expand into this area. They'd like to be part of what's happening with some of the buildings, the other building, everything else. So their procedures, it is a surgery center, it is under Department of Health, but it's not surgery the way you're thinking of it in the traditional sense. So it's more about procedures. So they are short procedures, and they're all outpatient.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to approve resolution number 2838 for the final land development. Do I have a second for this motion? I'll second that. Okay. Supervisor Winder, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, item E, authorization to advertise ordinance amending to the code of ordinances, chapter 26, article one, modifying the defined contribution benefit provisions of the non-uniformed employee pension plan. I'd like to call on Mr. Chris to examine, to discuss this.
Thank you Supervisor McDevitt. The board, you may recall back in 2020 and part of 2019, staff worked with the township's pension consultant to review East Martin Township's non-uniformed pension plan and explore different methods to, to better manage and control the township's long-term pension obligations and costs. One of those recommendations presented to and approved by the board in late 2020 was to freeze the existing defined benefit pension plan for township employees for all new hires effective January 1 of 2021, and replace it with a defined contribution plan. You passed the ordinance which froze the existing defined benefit plan, and before you tonight is the ordinance that creates the defined contribution plan and establishes the benefits and the operating provisions of that plan. So this is part two of a multi-phase approach we're taking to address long-term pension obligations. And what we're asking tonight is the board for authorization to advertise this ordinance, amending, I feel like Alex, amending the code of ordinances, modifying the defined contribution benefit provisions of the non-uniformed pension plan.
Questions from the board?
If I could jump in just to add two seconds, it's, everything Mr. Chris said is right, just for a more macro explanation, is that we, we took, when I started here several years ago, four or five years ago, and Mr. Chris started as well, we quickly looked at, at some of our pension plans and understood very quickly that pension reform was needed. And it was, you know, it was, it was important to the financial health of the township, to the residents of this township. And at the same time, we wanted to make a fair pension plan for our employees, something that made sense for everybody. This is the second stage that really consisted of a dozen changes in different areas. So that's where we are tonight, finally putting this last piece in. We've made great progress, and we think we're in a really good, strong position going forward.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board? I just want to make a quick comment. I know that you two have been working really hard on this. And I think it goes back to being fiscal responsible, being financially responsible over our township and our budget, and being mindful of that going forward, which I think sometimes was missing in prior administrations. So I just want to thank you both for doing that.
Thank you.
Questions, comments, any other questions or comments from the board? I'd like to make a motion to authorize to advertise ordinance amending the code of ordinance, chapter 26, article one, modifying the defined contribution benefit provisions plan. Do I have a second of that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, second by Supervisor McDevitt. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Municipal complex roof and gutter replacement project, change order number one. I would like to call on the Director of Engineering Services, Mr. James Sullivan, to review this item, please.
Thank you, Chair DePiero. This is change order number one, and as I've guaranteed, Mr. Hart, the only change order for this project. One of the light items in the bid was for plywood replacement as the project progressed. We had a line item of $120 per sheet for any plywood that was either damaged or, we actually decided to move a few of the attic ventilators, so we, we created our own problems with, with the plywood. But from the main building, there were 30 sheets of plywood that had to be replaced or, or redone. And on the police garage, there were nine sheets of plywood. For a total of 39 sheets at $120 apiece, the change order is for $4,680. We ask that you approve this change order.
So I will have to come and see her.
That's okay. I think we're done.
One thing I.
I'm sorry.
One thing I can tell you, the most, the most irritating thing for me in, in any kind of project, whether it's public or private, is this, what's custom, customary in the field, is you bid it out, you get a price, you pay for it, and then they come back with a change order one, change order two, where you owe more money for different things you did. Clearly unreasonable. I say, when you give me a price, you do the job and we pay the price. So Jim knows that I've really, it, it's something that I fight back on very strongly with what's common in the industry. This, on the other hand, is something they can't tell, when they pull the roof shingles off, they can't tell what's underneath it. And the wood was, there was a lot of ratted wood. And the fact that through the pandemic, wood went from $12 to $128 a sheet.
Yep.
There's for $4,000. So that's my little diatribe. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Any questions or comments from the board? So I'd like to make a motion to approve the roof and gutter replacement project, change order number one. Second on that motion?
I'll second.
Okay, second by Supervisor De Santo. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, Human Relations Commission appointment.
Human Relations Commission appointment. I'd like to call on Township Manager, Mr. Bob Hart, to review this item.
Thank you, Vice Chair Givanas. As you know, when, 10 years or so ago, when East Norton was one of the first municipalities to pass a human relations ordinance, Mr. Don Ben, here in the audience, was the first chair of that and part of the forming of that commission. Many townships now have human relations commissions, but I can tell you, there's not one that I know anywhere in the state that ever reached the success and the peaks that East Norton's Human Relationship Commission, and I am not exaggerating at all, that we reached those peaks under the leadership of Mr. Ben as the chairman of that, that commission. We, I chased Mr. Ben down, tackled him on the lawn and requested strongly that he come back and help revitalize our commission and the good work that it did. So he's here before you tonight, willing to be reappointed and desiring, desiring to be appointed, and that's before you tonight, so.
Now, what position did you put him in if we say no? Kidding, I'm kidding.
We're P S's now.
Well, I guess it's the first question. Would you be willing to, you know, be a leader in this?
Madam Chair, I certainly would.
Okay. Excellent. All right. We'd be happy to have you. I know I can't, I'm speaking for everybody, but I mean, strong, powerful words from Mr. Hart, and I feel like we need more inclusiveness in our community. And it seems like you're the guy who's willing to do it and has success, has done it in the past, so we would love to have you.
I'm going to take everything that I did before, learn from every mistake I made before, and pivot into the world we live in today.
Okay. Good. I'm happy to hear that. Okay. So I'd like to make a motion to approve Mr. Don Ben as our Human Relation Commissioner. Right? That's his title?
To serve, to serve the appropriate term, and we'll work that out with him when we meet.
Yeah. Do I have a second on that motion?
I'll second.
Okay. Seconded by Vice, Vice Chair Givanas. I'm getting there. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations.
There's list. Item H, monthly expenditures, May 25th through 28th, 2021, $394,976.99, including payroll, $513,157.18, with a total of $908,134.17. Mr. Chris, sorry.
That's all right. Thank you Supervisor Santo.
Explain that.
Yeah. So you are correct.
Thank you.
Those are the expenditures from, the way we do this is from the last meeting date to the day before this meeting date. So they cover that period of May 25th through June 28th, and the expenditures did total the $908,134.17. The only thing note I'll make for the board is that our payroll expenses are slightly higher than previous months because this meeting was extended from June 22nd to June 29th, and because we pay weekly, there's an extra payroll included in there. So the $513,000 is slightly higher than what it might typically would be. So what we're asking for is the board just to affirm those total expenditures of $908,134.17 for that period of time.
Okay.
And thank you for the assist.
Sorry.
Any questions by the board? I'd like to make a motion to approve monthly expenditures. I'd like to have a second on that motion? I'll second that. Seconded by Supervisor Winder. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Other business? Other business? Managers update?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll try to make it quick. AM radio will be playing here at the, it's a very popular band, a lot of late 60s, early 70s hits, mid 60s, has quite a following. They'll be playing here at the Stamper Street Complex on Light Knife. Come on out, it's going to be a great, great night, great event, hopefully not too hot, but it'll be a really good time. Keep on the lookout for the parks and rec changes that are occurring virtually daily at this point. We continue to upgrade our parks and our amenities and our infrastructure every chance we can. I know the board has made it a priority and we are following through with that the best we can and putting, putting our infrastructure and amenities at the forefront for our residents. And lastly, I don't often, well, I do often get a chance to say in a public meeting how I appreciate the public works and the police, and I do, and they do, all do great work. Sometimes there's a couple people get missed, missed out on in there. I will say, my assistant manager here, Jeff Winterbottom, came in, he doesn't, you know, the assistant manager does a lot of the dirty work that never gets noticed. It's, it does the H, human relations stuff, all the benefit stuff that, that nobody wants to do, I can tell you that. And Jeff has come in and really professionalized that for us. We had an HR department that was informal to the degree of not very effective. We are not that anymore. We are professionalized. We need to move in that direction in every aspect. So I do appreciate Jeff's contribution and we look forward to a long, a long tenure here. And second, the reason I bring these to, because we all work in a suite together. Margaret Thomas in the back, she keeps the wheels of East Norton Township rolling. We, I know you all know that. But when, when people call in and, and they need an answer, and like I've told many people that come up to me, when someone calls here, their issue, you may, we may consider their issue minor, but to them, it's extremely important because they took the time to call here. So Marge and the rest of our staff understands that, even when it's tough sometimes. But we, we respond with compassion and generosity in information and our time and try to give the best answers and the best support we can regardless of the amount we can do. And Marge leads that way with us and, and keeps, keeps us doing what we do every day and not getting lost in, in some other stuff. So thank you, Marge. That's all I have.
Thank you so much. And just to add to that, we appreciate you. I know it's for everybody on the board. Both of you, thank you, such big assets to our township. So we appreciate you. Thank you. Citizens to be heard?
Hi. My name is Kimberly D. Maria. I reside at 2995 Bramley Lane. I am part of the Hidden Ridge subdivision, and I am here because I have an ongoing issue with neighboring property and water runoff. There have been people in this room that have already been at my property. But what I'm asking for now is I am trying to determine whether or not, when the subdivision of Hidden Ridge was built, whether or not there was a plan or an ordinance discussing water runoff specifically. Our area, all of the houses currently that were built in that newer division, our, some pump returns and our gutters are all underground and they tie directly into the stormwater system. And I'm wanting to find out if that was made into an ordinance that required the builders to do that. And the reason I'm asking for that is because that is the issue on neighboring property, that the line to the sewer system, I believe, is broken. And so all of his gutters and his, water from his some pump go underground and then just run to my property because I'm downhill. And it's causing a major problem. And I've been, keep getting tossed back and forth between code and engineering, code and engineering, code and engineering. And that's really kind of what I'm looking for. If somebody, I don't know if I need to request, to do the, you know, PA right to request to find that information. I just want to know, when they built that, was that a requirement that those houses have a line that's tied to the system that remains working? Because if it's broken, then it's out of.
If I, if I could ask, do we, do we have your information? Do we have your contact?
Yeah, I've been, I've been to Mr. Maria's house and did, did the code department follow up after I?
Everybody comes out and they look at it and they say, go get back to me. This last time, they gave him a sighting or something, he fixed it. But again, it's not fixing the problem.
I've done, excuse me, I've done some research into what you're asking about, and I did not find that in any of the plans or that this was a requirement or part of an ordinance. I mean, I'll look again.
I just find it hard to believe that a builder would spend that money if it wasn't required, if he didn't do it anywhere else.
And it seems to be the only spot in township that this happening is, is your neighborhood.
Correct. And I believe it's because there is a known, there's no place for the water to go. So that's why I believe that the property is required to get it to the stormwater.
And he was cited for?
This time it was because the gutter was broken. Because of the winter, he backed all the way up to the gutter and pulled the gutter off the house. But again, now fixing the gutter doesn't, the water is still going underground, hitting the break, and running off my property.
Well, if I could suggest that we get the plans, get the files, we invite you in and we'll sit at the table.
Yeah, I just want to review it because then that will.
Well, that's what I'm saying. We'll go, we'll go through it, and that way, we're all in the same thing. You can look at it, we'll look at it, anything you understand, I don't understand, we'll be able to explain. But let's do that so we're all on the same page because I didn't know there was all these different things. So let's do that, we're all in the same room, I have everybody there, and we'll, we'll find out whatever answer we can find out.
Yeah. Because I, you know, again, it said like, these guys came and you guys approved stuff. So I don't know if it's, you know, I don't know if it was in the plan, if we did it in ordinance, if we did, you know, I know there's all these different things, sorry if I don't have the right terminology. But I'm just trying to find out if they, if the board at that time only approved it.
I understand.
Yeah. With the assumption that you were always taking your water runoff from your property directly to the stormwater.
We will go through it with you. Honestly, because I don't have that answer, and I want to know it as well, so we will do that. Okay. Jim, you have that information?
I do.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
I see.
Thank you. Would you like to come on?
Go ahead, I can't hold you.
I'm going to start with an anecdote, anecdote for those of you who haven't heard it before. 35 years ago in October, I was touring the neighborhoods with the prospect of transferring and buying a house. And we came to East Norton Township through Blue Belt, uptownship Line Road, and we got to the top of Pot Shop Road, and we made a left-hand turn with the realtor, and she said, she said, if you look over the horizon there, you can see the monument at Valley Forge. And back in those days, you sure could. She said, I point that out because the development that I'm going to show you today is called Valley Forge Green. So as we rocked down the hill, I looked to the right and I said, what about that? She says, oh, don't worry, it'll be closed before you get to settlement. And that was Gil Quarry. So here we are 35-plus years later, and Gil Quarry raises a different issue for the neighbors and residents of the township almost on a daily basis now. We don't know where this dirt pile product is coming from, where they intend to put it, or, or whatever. I mean, I've heard people come into the polling place and say, I counted them the other day, there was 228 trucks came down Pot Shop Road. And somebody else says, well, that was coming from your direction. You didn't count the ones that came up Township Line Road, came into there. And dirt and stone spill, and one time they broke all the wires down and put us out of cable service for two days and so forth. We had a good relationship with the new owners, I think. They took the time to cultivate soil and build mounds and plant some evergreen trees to provide some kind of a buffer along Schultz Road, but they got a little lazy in the process. When they got down the hill, they didn't cultivate the mounds and they didn't add any, any organic compound to it. So half those trees are dead today. So that went from being something that might have been kind of a nice buffer or something, sort of an eyesore. Mowing is a problem, and this is a matter of somebody calling the township and said the grass is a foot tall again, and, and, you know, they should go out and maintain it. There's an issue with a large piece of chipping equipment that they're operating, what I think is outside the boundary of the property's zone, heavy industrial area. If you look at all those parcels, there's, there's a piece of it. And, and I just checked this afternoon and on the Google Earth map, that piece of equipment is sitting outside of the heavy industrial zone. It's operating sometimes from seven o'clock in the morning until as late as six o'clock at night. When I sit in my second floor office in my home, it sounds like a twin-engine aircraft revving its engines at full throttle at the end of the runway, which is only about 600 yards away from my house at that point. And I have asked the township repeatedly to investigate these issues, and the answer has always been respectfully, we're working on it. We'll get to it.
Okay. Can I just go to you right here and we can try to get an explanation from Mr. Hart?
Just let me, let me wrap.
Okay. Thank you.
Today, we have a situation where we're whispering down the lane again. Between Nextdoor and Facebook and other social media things, some neighbors say, I heard this, others say, I heard that, some people said, I know it's, it's this or that. And this has to stop. I mean, if, if the township has taken a position on these things and so forth, then everybody needs to be informed, everybody needs to be informed in the same way, as opposed to people pondering all the time.
Okay.
And people speaking with great authority about what they think they know and so forth. So I'm, I'm just asking, I want to bring it to the board.
Thank you.
To make you aware of the situation that we're facing on that end of the township and also ask.
And we are aware. And Mr. Hart, did you want to further explain?
Yeah, I appreciate the comments. The board is acutely aware of these. And as you know, we are working on these, these issues. It's a complex issue because the, again, we've, we've discussed this numerous times, but it, it's a mining permit that tells the township, anything under the mining permit, you don't have a say in. There's other things outside the mining permit that we are working on.
Does that include the mulching operation?
Just let it finish, please.
We have a sound.
I just wanted to add that I didn't use the word mulch yet.
We, we have a sound study that we're finalizing now. We have a complete zoning review of every use that may be going on there, that has been accused of being going on, that could go there in the future. We have a meeting that just went out for July 13th, I think it is.
Next Tuesday.
To discuss all these topics and invite everybody in. And they, if you haven't been notified, you will be. So that's our next step to bring all that stuff out. What else, what else on that? So, so this stuff has been worked on for, as you know, with Matt, with Representative Bradford's office. And, and let me say this, the only, the, the two things you did mention, social media. If I could stop people from gossiping on social media, I'd do it tomorrow. I hate it, right? Because they're all, you know, you don't know what's going on. And as far as your realtor who drove you down 35 years ago and said that'll be closed, that, that thing, they lied to you.
They all did.
I, I live across the street from a quarry in my neighborhood, and people paid $1 million for homes right on the quarry, and they were told not only that the quarry was done, but that the railroad that went by there was out of act, out of use within a month. They were called again saying it was lied to. So I understand that fully. That's, that seems to be the, the MO. But if you haven't seen the July 13th information, you will get, we will get it too specifically because the bunch have been mailed out and emailed out. So most of your, most of the answers will be available at that particular meeting.
What will be the broadcast range for the invites?
The broad, the, how far we're going out? I'll have to look where we went, but well past your house, so.
It seems limited. Because I'm only 100 feet from that driveway and I have noticed something.
Well, you will, we just, this is.
The only people that were notified were the people that attended the meeting that we had that provided $13 dresses.
Right. And there's somebody on that, Mr. Kelly?
Kelly?
Kelly? Who is going to notify all you. Well, you'll know, you're the chair. You're the chair of the planning commission. Well, I'll make sure you know.
Which is why I question you too, because I've gotten notice of any of the meetings at the quarry, and I live closer than Ken.
Yeah. Well, the, let me, let me go back.
Was that, excuse me? Was that from a DTE meeting that we had this?
There was a meeting here with Representative Bradford and everyone assigned.
That is, a group of residents came in here.
I said, there might be as many as 800 residents that have something, that have some interest in this quarry. I'm not going to reach for that because it'll spot at the fourth rank.
No, no, I understand. What I'm saying is, there's basic information from, that is going to go out there. We're going to put all that, where does the sound come from?
It's Ken.
It'll stop.
Oh, wait. Thank you. Holy smokes. We're trying to get this information out. We will put it out, which I even told, if you recall, on Facebook, when people come out and say, you know, I've had conversations with people, and then they go on Facebook and say, I can't get the information. I'm thinking, holy sploats, I just told you, I just talked to you. So I put the information on Facebook, and nobody comes back and says, oh.
So can I just make a suggestion here? So can we just put out a mail or two, as many people as possible?
We will.
And on social media, so that way, all...
To be honest with you, we will, but there's, I promise you, no matter what we do, it will be enough. We're already going to do, I'm going to put a presentation available. We're also going to get Zoom, so you can be at work, you can be on vacation, because it's July, you know what I mean? So we're working on that now. We just wanted to get some stuff out to Matt Bradford's office and send it to Capelletti, because they want to be involved. So that's what we're moving on now.
All right, thank you.
If I might suggest, I'd like to see everybody notified that is west of Pot Shop Road on both sides of woodland, and maybe even to the auntie's house down there on...
Madam Chair, if I may, that's not, that's, west of Pot Shop Road doesn't make a whole lot of sense when you're talking about Gil Quarry, because if you're only notifying people west of Pot Shop Road...
I didn't finish.
Well, I'm interjecting, I'm interjecting.
And further.
You've been talking for a while now.
And further east.
Mr. Chris?
Well, I'm offering a constructive suggestion, and if this board wants to tell a resident that he's not appreciated in suggesting, I live there, you don't.
I live here.
No, I live there.
I live there, too.
Yes, sir, you do.
You are trying to give solutions.
And I'm...
We just wanted to give a comment.
Part of the solution needs to be a widespread communication to all the neighbors, and I'll say it this way, maybe everything west of Sunset, because all of those people have complained about noise, they've complained about vibration, their doors don't fit, their windows don't work, they've got cracks in their basement, and everybody needs to be heard on this.
Maybe we encourage them to come to our meetings as well.
Yes.
Okay.
But if they don't know about the meeting, they're not encouraged because they're not invited.
I...
I mean, I get a whole bunch of people to come out and say, when was that?
I'm taking your suggestions under advisement. I assure you, it will be transmitted. If you think I want anybody to be able to come and say, I didn't know about it, I would have been there, I don't want that. I wouldn't get, I wouldn't dare, because I don't want to, you know, I mean, I don't want to redo the whole process. So I will, I will...
And I also think, and I've done road calls before, I know what they cost, and it can be somewhat prohibitive, but 24, 36, 48 hours before the actual meeting, after the receipt of a notice, I think it would be helpful to have a road call, just a heads up, the meeting is...
Understood.
Thank you.
Understood.
Good suggestion, thank you.
Let's get everybody going.
Thank you.
I assure you, this information, we want to get to the residents, most of it is going to be very positive, so, I mean, I think they're going to want to hear it, so that's my point here.
I agree.
Thank you. Any other citizens to be heard? Okay. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. Tonight's June meeting.
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Givanas. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, meeting's adjourned.